Tonight's invocation will be led by Father Anis Manishi. Is that correct?
Yes.
Of Saint Edward's Roman Catholic Church. After the invocation, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Creator and sustainer of all that is or will ever be. We are thankful for this day that you have given us, for its blessing, its opportunities, and its challenges. May we appreciate and use each day that comes to us. We pray for strength and guidance for each day as it comes, for each day's duties, for each day's problems. As we gather here today as members of City Council, we pray that we are ever mindful of opportunities to render our service to our fellow citizens and to our city. Keep in mind always the enduring values of life, putting our efforts in those areas and on those things upon which future generation can build with confidence. Let us continue to strive to make a better world and a better city. May we stay focused on the objectives we have for our city: peace, tranquility, and a true brotherhood and a true manhood. Help us to reaffirm our commitment to the people we serve. May we be challenged to give our best always, and may we be assured of your presence with us. Amen.
Amen. My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Father, I want to thank you. Okay, thank you. The clerk will call the roll of the members.
President Young, Kraft, Scott, Curran, Specter, Middleton, Mosby, Walsh, Riceinger, Costello, Stokes, Clark. Mr. President, Weaver Quam.
Thank you. Tonight's showcase Baltimore presentation is by Gloria Edda Friend of Trash is Beautiful Art. I'm very excited about this showcase and about the special event I am hosting this week in partnership with Trash is Beautiful Art to celebrate Earth Day on Wednesday, April the 22nd. On Earth Day, I will be partnering with Trash is Beautiful Art to host a display of their art right here in City Hall, and Trash is Beautiful Art will show a group of students from cross-country elementary school how to create their own art from trash. Welcome.
Good afternoon, everyone. First of all, I would like to thank everyone for allowing us to be here and speak on behalf of Trash is Beautiful Art. So 10 years ago, me and my husband Rodney Friend in our audience, we came up with Badger Foundation. We have partners with individual recreation centers, community associations, to have a Read to Achieve program that gives out books to encourage reading during the summer month. In addition to a handout of books, kids receive supplies. We have expanded this program, including our Read to Achieve bookmarks, so kids can read stories about themselves. Doing our Read to Achieve trash cleanup was a portion of our effort to start our programs in the street. Doing that, we had to clean up several areas. Me and my husband asked ourselves, what could we do to encourage people from stop throwing out trash? What can we do with this trash? So one day, my husband began to experiment with a little soda bottle, just one 3-liter soda bottle, by cutting it and melting it with acrylic paint. From that day on, we said, wow, this is art. We had participated in several events: in the Fells Point Fest, Artscape 2013, Morgan State University Recyclemenia. We noticed at Artscape that our work was more of education. We displayed several articles and several things out for the kids, and we were constantly telling them how we made this soda bottle, how we turned this chip bag into art. A great deal of trash shows up on road sides, material areas, waterways, litter, harm, our quality, and plants in our areas. Trash degrades us. Trash brings down our property value. So our concept of Trash is Beautiful Art is to provide something functional from waste, to show students, to protect their environment, and how this can be a good thing for them to turn a recycled product into a nice piece of art. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for all that you do, and we're looking forward to partnering with you and having cross-country elementary school here to find out how they can do art from trash. Okay, is the council's custom to generalize the invocation? I ask for most of the generalize the prayer. Motion by Councilman Scott, second by Councilman Riceinger. All those in favor of generalizing the prayer say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have the motion is adopted. We'll now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the Proceedings for the March 30th City Council Meeting is on the council member's desk.
They have motioned to approve the journal. Motion by Councilman Scott, second by Council Vice President Riceinger. All those in favor of adopting the journal say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion currently in the journal is adopted. Bill signed by the mayor can be found on Page 2 of the agenda. Bills will be introduced.
City Council Bill 15-0514, Fire and Police Employees Retirement Systems Benefit Payments: Ordinance for the Purpose of Amending the Provisions Related to the Payments of Benefits: Amending Certain Administrative Provisions to Reflect Current Accrual and Accounting Practices; Clarifying, Correcting, Clarifying, and Conforming Related Provisions Providing for a Special Effective Date and Generally Relating to the Fire and Police Employees Retirement System of the City of Baltimore. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the Administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0515, City Streets Opening: Air Rights Over Portion of a 10-Foot Alley in the Rear of 435 through 439 East Lafayette Avenue. Ordinance for the Purpose of Condemning and Opening Air Rights over Portion of a 10-Foot Alley in the Rear of 435 through 439 East Lafayette Avenue, Extending Westly 56 Feet More or Less from Greenmount Avenue as shown on Plat 202A 61, and the Office of Department of General Services, and Providing for a Special Effective Date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the Administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Community Development Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0516, City Streets Closing: Air Rights over Portion of a 10-Foot Alley in the Rear of 435 through 439 East Lafayette Street. Ordinance for the Purpose of Condemning and Closing Air Rights over Portion of a 10-Foot Alley in the Rear of 435 through 439 East Lafayette Avenue, Extending Westly 56 Feet More or Less from Greenmount Avenue as shown on Plat 202A 61A, and the Office of Department of General Services, and Providing for a Special Effective Date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the Administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Community Development Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0517, Sale of Property: Air Rights over Portion of a 10-Foot Alley in the Rear of 435 through 439 East Lafayette Avenue. Ordinance for the Purpose of Authorizing the Mayor and City Council of Baltimore to Sell at Either Public or Private Sale. Alts Interested in the Air Rights Area over Portion of a 10-Foot Alley in the Rear of 435 through 439 East Lafayette Avenue, Extending Westly 56 Feet More or Less from the Greenmount Avenue, from Greenmount Avenue, and No Longer Needed for Public Use, and Providing for a Special Effective Date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the Administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0518, City Streets Opening: Two 10-Foot Alleys in the Area Between Lafayette Avenue, Landville Street, Barclay Street, and Greenmount Avenue. Ordinance for the Purpose of Condemning and Closing Two 10-Foot Alleys Between Lafayette Avenue, Landville Street, Barclay Street, and Greenmount Avenue as shown on Plat 202A 61, and the Office of Department of General Services, and Providing for a Special Effective Date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the Administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Community Development Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0519, City Streets Closing: Two 10-Foot Alleys Between Lafayette Avenue, Landville Street, Barclay Street, and Greenmount Avenue. Ordinance for the Purpose of Condemning and Closing Two 10-Foot Alleys Between Lafayette Avenue, Landville Street, Barclay Street, and Greenmount Avenue as shown on Plat 202A 61A, and the Office of Department of General Services, and Providing for a Special Effective Date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the Administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Community Development Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0520, Sale of Property: Former Beds of Two 10-Foot Alleys Between Lafayette Avenue, Landville Street, Barclay Street, and Greenmount Avenue. Ordinance for the Purpose of Authorizing the Mayor and City Council of Baltimore to Sell at Either Public or Private Sale. Alts Interested in Certain Parcels of Land Known as the Former Beds of Two 10-Foot Alleys Between Lafayette Avenue, Landville Street, Barclay Street, and Greenmount Avenue, and No Longer Needed for Public Use, and Providing for a Special Effective Date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the Administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0521, Popleton Development District. Ordinance for the Purpose of Designating a Development District to be known as Popleton Development District, Providing for and Determining Various Matters in Connection with the Establishment of a Development District, Creating a Special Tax Increment Fund for the Development District, Allocating Certain Property Taxes to the Fund, Making Certain Findings and Determinations, Providing for a Special Effective Date, and Generally Relating Four Matters Relating to the Designation and Operation of the Development District and the Establishment and Use of the Special Tax Increment Fund to Provide for the Payment by or Reimbursement to the City for Debt Service which the City is Obligated to Pay or Has Paid, or on any Special Obligation Bonds or Notes issued by the City in Connection with the Development District, the Replenishment of any Reserve Fund, and the Payment of Certain Expenses and Administrative Costs related to the Operation of the Development District. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the Administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0522, Popleton Special Obligation Bonds. Ordinance for the Purpose of Authorizing the Issuance of Special Obligation Bonds, Authorizing the Pledge by the City, Subject to Appropriation of Tax Increment Revenues and Special Tax Revenues to the Payment of Debt Service on Such Special Obligation Bonds, the Replenishment of Any Reserves, and the Payment of Certain Expenses and Administrative Costs, Providing that Such Bonds May be Issued from Time to Time and in One or More Issues or Series in an Aggregate Principal Amount not Exceeding $58,311,000 for the Purpose of Financing Infrastructure Improvements and Related Costs, Including Without Limitation the Project and Other Necessary Improvements to, From, or Within the Development District, and Certain Other Infrastructure Improvements permitted by the Acts, Providing for the Method and Source of Payment for Such Special Obligation Bonds, Providing that the City in each Fiscal Year in which any such Bonds are outstanding use its Best Efforts to obtain the Appropriation of the Tax Increment Revenues and the Special Tax Revenues in the Amounts and at the Times specified in the Trust Agreement or Agreements between the City and a Bank or Trust Company Appointed as Trustee Thereunder, authorizing the Board of Finance to specify, prescribe, determine, provide, for, and approve the details, forms, documents, or procedures in connection with such Special Obligation Bonds, and any other matters necessary or desirable in connection with the Authorization, Issuance, Sale, and Payment of such Special Obligation Bonds, Providing for a Special Effective Date and Generally Relating to the Issuance and Payments of such Special Obligation Bonds. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the Administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0523, Popleton Special Taxing District. Ordinance for the Purpose of Designating a Special Taxing District to be known as Popleton Special Taxing District, Providing for and Determining Various Matters in Connection with the Establishment of the Special Taxing District, Creating a Special Fund for the Special Taxing District, Providing for the Levy of a Special Tax on All Taxable Real and Personal Property Located in the Special Taxing District, Authorizing the Pledge of the Special Tax Revenues to the Payment by or Reimbursement to the City for Debt Service on any Special Obligation Bonds or Notice issued by the City in Connection with the Special Taxing District, the Replenishment of any Reserve Fund, Providing for a Special Effective Date, and Generally Providing for Matters relating to the Designation and Operation of the Special Taxing District, the Establishment and Use of the Special Fund, and the Payment of Certain Expenses and Administrative Costs related to the Operation of the Special Taxing District. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the Administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0524, Labor and Employment Human Trafficking Whistleblower Protection. Ordinance for the Purpose of Prohibiting Retaliation Against Employees of Certain Employers for Reporting Suspected Human Trafficking, Defining Certain Terms, Providing for Certain Penalties, and Generally Relating to Employees' Reports of Suspected Human Trafficking. Sponsored Kraft, President Young, Henry Costello, Scott, Stokes, Holton, Walsh, Clark, Riceinger.
Please note that Councilman Curran is a co-sponsor, Councilman Mosby a co-sponsor. Councilman Scott, you're on here, right? You're already on here. Chair recognized, Councilman Kraft.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Please note that Councilwoman Middleton is a co-sponsor.
Thank you, Mr. President. As my colleagues know, we have been working on this human trafficking bill for a couple of months now. We've had some work sessions, and we will actually be having a public hearing on April 28th on the bill. One of the things that came out of the work sessions on the bill was a need for whistleblower protection. In talking with our legislative services people, they found that they believed that it would be better to have a standalone bill on whistleblower protection rather than have it incorporated into the body of that legislation itself. Therefore, we've introduced this Whistleblower Protection Act that will refer to solely the retaliation for those people reporting violations of human trafficking. We will be hearing this bill, and I'll announce that earlier later, Mr. President, on the same day that we have the public hearing on the bill itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Specter? Please note that Councilwoman Specter is a co-sponsor as well. This has been assigned to Judiciary Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0525, Resoning 600, 700, and 706 South Eden Street and 711 South Central Avenue. Ordinance for the Purpose of Changing the Zoning for the Properties Known as 600, 700, and 706 South Eden Street and 711 South Central Avenue as outlined in red in the accompanying plat, from the M3 zoning district to the B24 zoning district. Sponsored Kraft.
Chair recognized, Councilman Kraft.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I introduce this bill after it had been reviewed by the local community groups down in southeast. This is an exciting new project. Some of you may have seen about it on television or read about it in newspaper, but this is the next building coming up in Harbor East. This will be on the parking lot, which is presently the parking lot bordered by Alisana and Lancaster and Eden Street and Central Avenue. This is where the new Whole Foods Market will be built, about twice the size of the existing Whole Foods Market. New apartments, additional mixed-use office space, just before you'll go over to the new bridge onto Harbor Point. So we look forward to this being up and operating in about two and a half years. So we're excited about the building, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0526, Zoning: Conditional Use Parking, Open Off-Street Area, 4001 through 4005 Garrison Boulevard. Ordinance for the Purpose of Permitting, Subject to Certain Conditions, the Establishment, Maintenance, and Operation of a Parking Open Off-Street Area on the Property Known as 4001 through 4005 Garrison Boulevard as outlined in red in the accompanying plat. Sponsored Middleton.
Chair recognized, Councilwoman Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is basically just to get everything in order around Calvary Baptist Church on Garrison Boulevard. It's all the parking area around that church. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0527, Food Service Facilities: Public Notice of Suspensions, Relocations, and Non-Renewables. Ordinance for the Purpose of Expanding the Type and Scope of Public Notices Required for Food Service Facilities That Have Had Their Licenses Suspended, Revoked, or Denied Renewal; Clarifying, Correcting, and Conforming Related Provisions and Generally Relating to the Regulation of Food Service Facilities. Sponsored Scott, Henry Holton, Middleton, Clark.
Please note that Councilman Curran is a co-sponsor. Chair recognized, Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, members of the council, as everyone knows, we've had a long debate about food for service facilities and restaurant inspections. Unfortunately, between 2013 and 2014, 216 food service facilities in Baltimore were closed due to health violations, but unfortunately, all 216 went unknown to the general public immediately because they do not have to say why they are closed. This simply changes that and makes someone who's closed for rat infestation say that that's why they're closed and not for them to be able to say that they're closed because they're on vacation. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Committee of the Whole, and hopefully, if I get a date, we'll announce it tonight.
City Council Bill 15-0528, Franchise Xnet Systems Incorporated. Ordinance for the Purpose of Granting a Franchise to Xnet Systems Incorporated to construct, install, maintain, repair, operate, relocate, replace, and remove certain facilities related to the provision of a distributed antenna system services in and across certain streets and public ways, subject to certain terms and conditions, and providing for a Special Effective Date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the Administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Community Development Committee. Resolution to be introduced.
City Council Resolution 15-0222R, Earth Day, April 22nd, 2015. Resolution for the Purpose of Joining in the Worldwide Celebration of Earth Day on April 22nd, 2015, pledging the council's support to all citizens and groups charged with the management of natural resources and education promoting environmental understanding and responsibility in the next generation, and calling on all Baltimoreans to use Earth Day as an opportunity to contemplate how we can be better stewards of the environment we've inherited for our children and all future generations. Sponsored President Young, Henry Costello, Scott, Stokes, Holton, Middleton, Walsh, Clark, Riceinger.
Please note Councilman Mosby is a co-sponsor, Councilman Kraft is a co-sponsor. This year, I'm excited to celebrate Earth Day as a day to teach young people about the impact of trash on the environment, as well as how to reuse trash to create something beautiful. As mentioned before, the showcase Baltimore presentation, this Wednesday, April the 22nd, at 10:30, I will be partnering with Trash is Beautiful Art to host a display of their art here at City Hall. Trash is Beautiful Art will then show a group of students from cross-country elementary school how to create their own art from trash. I'm excited to host this program in honor of Earth Day and to engage youth in a mindful discussion of the importance of keeping our city clean. Chair recognized, Council Vice President Riceinger.
Mr. President, I move to suspend the rules for media adoption.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of suspended rules for media adoption of this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion currently rules are suspended. Chair recognized, Councilman Riceinger.
Mr. President, I move the resolution.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 15-0222R, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion currently in this resolution is adopted. You can find the consent count in Section A at the back of the agenda. They have motioned to approve the consent count. Motion by Councilman Henry, second by Councilman Kraft. All those in favor of approving the consent count, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion currently rules are suspended, and the resolution can be introduced, and will be City Council Bill 15-0223R. The clerk will read the resolution into the record.
City Council Resolution 15-0223R, Request for Federal Action: Full Senate Vote on the Nomination of Loretta Lynch to be U.S. Attorney General. Resolution for the Purpose of Supporting the Nomination of Loretta Lynch to Replace Eric Holder as U.S. Attorney General, and Calling on the Senate Leadership to Allow a Vote on Her Nomination by the Full Senate Without Further Unwarranted Delay. Sponsored Welsh.
Chair recognized, Councilman Welsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend the appropriate rules so that we can, the council can immediately adopt this resolution.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of suspended rules for media adoption of this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion currently rules are suspended. Oh, I'm sorry. Please note Council President Young is a co-sponsor. Can I say all council members? Can I say all council members? All council members. Chair recognized, Councilman Welsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the resolution favorably.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 15-0223R, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion currently in this resolution is adopted. Chair recognized, Councilwoman Holton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an issue that's been rather near and dear to me as Attorney Lynch is a member of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, but beyond that, this is an important issue. It's been 651 days since she was nominated, and what would really make a difference? It's great that we're doing this resolution, but for people to pick up the phone, call Congress, call members of that committee. If you have relatives in South Carolina and North Carolina in particular, call them. Have them call their congressional representatives and ask to bring this nomination to a vote because it is just being stalled because they can, and it's time for us to move forward. Attorney General Holder expressed an interest to step down, and he's unable to, and thank goodness, he is willing, to stay in position until a new attorney general is in position. This is a woman that is beyond qualified, has gone through all the steps, has not misstepped in her career, has not demonstrated any partisanship in any manner in her actions ever, and so it is time to bring this nominee to a vote. Thank you.
Thank you. You can find the consent count in Section A at the back of the agenda. They have motioned to approve this consent count. Motion by Councilman Kraft, second by Councilwoman Holton. All those in favor of approving the consent count, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion currently discounted is approved. All those in favor... Oh, Chair recognized, Councilman Kraft.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move that we move to suspend the appropriate rules to move by short title on second and third reading.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of short titles, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion currently... Chair recognized, Councilman Mosby.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues. Mr. Chair, if I can extend floor privileges to my guests? I make a motion to extend floor privileges to my guests.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of extending floor privileges so that he can have his special guest on the floor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion currently, Chair recognized, Councilman Mosby.
President and colleagues, today, Ms. Eaton. Mr. President, colleagues, today I stand with Ms. Elena Johnson of Compassion Over Killing to read this resolution, the City Council Baltimore Resolution, be it hereby known to all that the City Council Baltimore offers its sincerest congratulations to Ms. Elena Johnson in recognition of your efforts in organizing the Nationwide Veg Pledge that encourages people to explore the benefits of a vegetarian eating. This entire membership extends best wishes on this memorable occasion and directs this resolution be presented to you on this 20th day of April 2015, signed by our President, Bernard C. Jag Young, and myself, Councilman Nick Mosby. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 15-0274, Dr. Jamison Lawrence Esquire, Member, Environmental Control Board.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Specter. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 15-0275, Jennifer Joy Swanson, Member, Anti-Animal Abuse Advisory Committee, 2nd District.
I move the nomination favorably.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. This most, this nomination is confirmed.
EA 15-0276, Julianne S. Brown, Member, Anti-Animal Abuse Advisory Committee.
Chair Recognized Councilman Welsh.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Specter. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody want to confirm this nominee?
Aye.
Okay, those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed. Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0480, RPP Area 9, Plan Amendment.
Chair Recognized Councilman, Council Vice President Reissinger.
Mr. President, there's no amendments on this bill. I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill 14-0419, zoning conditional use conversion of a two-family dwelling unit to a three-family dwelling unit in the R8 zoning district, 3427 through 34, 3425 through 3427 Keswick Road.
Chair Recognized Councilwoman Clark.
Mr. President, members of the council, I'd like to make a motion to move this bill, which I am sponsoring, back to committee for amending.
Second by Councilmember Reissinger. All those in favor of referring this bill back to the Land Use and Transportation Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion to carry, this bill is in the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
Thank you.
Third reader to be held one meeting.
City Council Bill 14-0414, Plant Unit Development Amendment 1, Johns Hopkins, south of Orleans.
Third reader for final passage.
City Council Bill 14-0419, zoning conditional use conversion of a two-family dwelling unit to a four-family dwelling unit in the R8 zoning district, 100 South Strickus Street. President Young, Craft, Scott, Curran, Henry, Specter, Middleton, Mosby, Holton, Welsh, Reissinger, Costello, Stokes, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 14-0431, zoning conditional use conversion of a one-family dwelling unit to a two-family dwelling unit in the R8 zoning district, Variances 2125, Orleans Street. President Young, Craft, Scott, Curran, Henry, Specter, Middleton, Mosby, Holton, Welsh, Reissinger, Costello, Stokes, Clark.
This bill is approved. Please note that Councilman Craft abstains.
City Council Bill 14-0435, zoning conditional use conversion of a one-family dwelling unit to a three-family dwelling unit in the R8 zoning district, 2437 Madison Avenue. President Young, Craft, Scott, Curran, Henry, Specter, Middleton, Mosby, Holton, Welsh, Reissinger, Costello, Stokes, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill.
Please note that Councilman Craft abstains.
City Council Bill 15-0474, Waterfront Management District and Waterfront Management Authority, renewal through April 23rd, 2019. President Young, Craft, Scott, Curran, Henry, Specter, Middleton, Mosby, Welsh, Reissinger, Costello, Stokes, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 15-0484, Motor Fuel Sales Air Pumps. President Young, Craft, Scott, Curran, Henry, Specter, Middleton, Mosby, Holton, Welsh, Reissinger, Costello, Stokes, Clark.
This bill is approved. Please note Councilwoman Clark abstains. Committee announcements. Chair Recognized Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. First bill, I move a suspension of rules 10-2 and 10-3.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of suspended rules to announce a hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion to carry, Chair Recognized Councilman Stokes.
Thank you. Taxation, Finance, Economic Development announces a hearing on Wednesday, May 13, 3:00 PM. Bill 15-0219R, informational hearing, changes to the City of Baltimore Deferred Compensation Plan, requesting the Department of Finance, Employees Retirement System, and Labor Commissioner to report to the City Council on changes being made to the City of Baltimore Deferred Compensation Plan. The effects, the changes to this plan would have on 9,600 participants and the more than $350 million in assets currently held in the plan. The current outreach efforts and outcomes of those outreach efforts and the plans to continue outreach over the coming months. I have, I have three more. I'm sorry. I have three more bills, Mr. President. Taxation, Finance, Economic Development will hear Council Bill 14-430 on May 6, 2015, hearing chambers at 4:30 PM. That's a sale of property, 3314, 3318, Airedale Avenue. Also, Taxation, Finance, Economic Development Committee will hear Bill 14-0452 on May 6, 2015, at 4:35, sale of property, 1719 and 23, South Gay Street. Also, Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development will hear Bill 14-0461, May 6, 2015, 4:40 PM, here in chambers, at sale of property, former beds of a three-foot alley and a four-foot alley, bounded by West 29th Street, Fox Street, West 28th Street, and Huntington Avenue, and there's a fourth. Taxation, Finance, Economic Development will hear Bill 14-0455, here in chambers, May 6, 2015, 5:00 PM. It will be a televised hearing. It's a minority and women's business enterprises, small local business enterprise procurement preferences, for the purpose of creating a small local business enterprise program to be administered by the Minority and Women's Business Opportunity Office, requiring the establishment of goal-setting committees for certain specified industry categories. Thank you, Mr. President.
Committee announcement. Chair Recognized Council Vice President Reissinger.
Mr. President, members of the council, the Land Use and Transportation Committee will hold a voting session on City Council Bill 12-0138, which is Wednesday, April 22nd, at 2:10 PM. This is a voting session on transit and traffic of the commercial vehicles. The committee will also hold a, will hold a hearing on Bill 15-0482 on Wednesday, May 6, at 1:00 PM in the council chambers. This is a zoning, it's a conditional use conversion of a two-family dwelling unit to a three-family dwelling unit in the R8 zoning district on the property known as 3425 through 3427 Keswick Road. The committee will also have a hearing on City Council Bill 15-0496 on Wednesday, May 13, at 1:00 PM in the council chambers. This is a zoning, it's a conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to a two-family dwelling unit in the R8 zoning district. It's a variance at 1301 North Broadway. The committee will hold, we reschedule it from April 29th. The committee on Bill Number 15-0473 on Wednesday, May 13, at 1:05 PM in the council chambers. This is a rezoning, 31 through 35, North Fulton Avenue. And also, the committee will have a televised work session for Council Bill 12-0152, Transform Baltimore. There's Appendix A, the tables, on Wednesday, May 13, at 5:30 PM in the council chambers. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Committee announcement. Committee announcement. Chair Recognized Councilman Craft.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, the Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will conduct a voting session on Council Oversight Hearing, City Stat Changes, 150241R, on Tuesday, April 28, 2015, at 9:35 AM here in the council chambers. Move to suspend the appropriate rules to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilwoman Specter. All those in favor of suspended rules to announce a hearing, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion to carry, Chair Recognized Councilman Craft.
The Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will hear Council Bill 150512 on Tuesday, Novem, Tuesday, April 28, 2014, at 9:30 AM, Baltimore Day. Move to, actually, this is an announcement of a hearing change in time. On Tuesday, April 28, 2015, the Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will be hearing Bill 140464, Hotels Human Trafficking Prevention, at 9:40 AM instead of 9:30 AM. Move to suspend the appropriate rules to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilman, second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of suspended rules to announce a hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion to carry, Chair Recognized Councilman Craft.
The Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will conduct a hearing on Council Bill 150524, Labor and Employment Human Trafficking Whistleblower Statute, on Tuesday, April 28, 2014, 9:45 AM here in the council chambers. The Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will conduct an informational hearing on Resolution 150220R, Cleaner Streets, on Wednesday, June 17, 2015, at 5:00 PM here in the council chambers, and this informational hearing will be televised on Charm TV 25. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair Recognized Councilwoman Holton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to bring to the attention of my colleagues, on your desk is a preliminary budget hearing schedule, and this is so that you can mark your calendars and be prepared. This is based upon the timing that the Budget Bureau of Management Research has let us, has informed us as to when we will receive the detail of the budget. And so you'll notice, beginning on Tuesday, May 12, from 5 to 7, we will have an overview of the budget where the Director of the Budget Bureau of Management will come before us to go over the budget on, so, and we're due to receive it that Monday, the 11th, so you really need to study your preliminary budget that you have now and to look to those areas that you really are questioning, and looking at last year. So we have enough data, and it's just the overview. We will begin formal budget hearings on Wednesday, May 27, from 1:00 PM to 8:00 PM, Thursday, May 28, from 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Friday, May 29, from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. We will have taxpayer night on Monday, June 8, immediately following council meeting, immediately following council meeting. A follow-up session, if needed, on Tuesday, June 9, from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and the Budget and Appropriations Committee will hold a voting session at 3:00 PM on June 9. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Recognized Councilwoman Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. The Education and Youth Committee of the Baltimore City Council will meet on May 21st, 2015, at 4:00 PM to consider City Council Resolution 15-0213R, informational hearing on Sugar-Free Kids, introduced by our colleague, Councilman Nick Mosby. It's, it's for the purpose of inviting members of the Sugar-Free Kids Coalition to appear before the council to discuss the effects that sugar has on children, as well as ways that these effects can be reduced and mitigated to ensure a healthy future for all of Baltimore's children. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more announcements? Regular announcements. You have announcements? Okay, before she do, I want to ask the Council Vice President to have a moment of silence for Dr. Elijah Saunders, Stephen A. Jackson, Dr. Levi Watkins, Freddie Gray, and Tai Wong Short. Thank you. Chair Recognized Councilwoman Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to take a moment. On the streets of Baltimore today, I feel, I'm reminded of Zora Neale Hurston's book titled, "Their Eyes Were Watching God." It feels to me as if there's a quiet and an anticipation and a watching the skies and watching of God right now in Baltimore City, because of the death of the young man who died yesterday morning. May he rest in peace. Yes, Freddie Gray. So, I just wanted to stand to say what I think that we all feel in our hearts as we watch God, and that is that it is important here in our city for our heart and well-being that we find an objective analysis, a truthful statement, and that this is done with all deliberate speed. That's all I have to say, because our eyes are watching God, hoping, I believe, for those three things, and may God bless us all while we do.
Chair Recognized Council Vice President Reissinger.
Mr. President, colleagues, the next meeting of the City Council will be held on Monday, April 27, at 5:00 PM in the council chambers, and I ask for a moment of silence for Freddie Gray, Stephen A. Jackson, Dr. Levi Watkins, Tai Wong Short, and Dr. Elijah Saunders.
Thank you. There being no further business, this concludes the 88th meeting of the 71st term of the Baltimore City Council. Good night.